Opinions between the city and the county. So during this year, we negotiated with the county, very amicably, I should say, but provided a lot of information from the county and determined that really the best way to go forward is to agree on a set amount based on what they have provided. And that amount really was lower than what they were kind of suggesting, much lower than earlier this year. And as I said in the email, there is then a date or a dollar amount certain for 2020 expenses, and then going forward, there would just be a 3% increase. So instead of trying to determine what are operational expenses that the city should share or not, we know what the amount is. So in this calendar year, we did pay a true-up for 2020. So we've completed our 2020 obligation. What we haven't paid, though, in 2021 is any amount towards the operational expenses. We didn't know what they were. There was this discussion between the parties about what they should be. Now we know, based on what we've agreed as the 2020 baseline of expenses, then going 3% each year higher, we know the exact amount that we owe in 2021, and that is $105,274. We need to budget that amount since we haven't paid any, and in future years, we will pay April 1st 50%, October 1st the second 50%. Of course, this year, we didn't know what the amount was until just recently, but now we need to pay that entire amount at one time. So in your ordinance 96, I would ask that you amend the Section 3 with the new plus amount, should be $58,981.77, with a new total of $167,409.04. Working with the Finance Director, we came up with the exact amount that would be needed to appropriate the necessary funds for the city to pay the obligation that you are approving under the amendment. So that first figure was not accurate. We had to rework it a little bit. So you need to move to amend that ordinance before you read it for a second time and then vote on suspension and passage. Any questions?
Councilman Jones.
Thank you. President Vogt? I think I'm more confused now than what I was. I know two weeks ago, we read the first reading, and I guess we didn't get to vote on it, or at least I didn't. At the end of the meeting, I said, can we go back and talk about it? I think it was that one. But anyways, understood someone say the base was $103,000 with a 3% increase. So I took $103,000, and I multiplied that by 3%, and I added the second year and the third year, and I just went out 20 years. And that came out to $186,000. We're going to be paying, is it TSEP or who's? No, I'm saying, strike that. Joint Justice Center, $186,000, we're going to be paying them 20 years from now? Am I, was my math correct? It starts out at 103, and 20 years from now, it ends up at 186?
Yeah, I don't know the math. I didn't do all that for as long as you did. But it is a 3% increase per year, correct?
So two weeks ago, I heard $103,000. Tonight, I just heard $105,274. How does that compare to the $103,000 I heard two weeks ago?
Yeah, the first year, the baseline year, I'll call it, is 2020, and the amount for 2020 was actually $102,207.77. Then if you take 3% on that, then you get the, for 2021, the $105,274. So those are the exact figures.
Thank you, sir. Let's not end it there. There's got to be more to it. Heard someone say there's a true-up for 2020. Didn't hear a dollar amount. What was the dollar amount for the true-up, or what was the base price?
Yeah, the base amount was $53,500 for 2020. We paid that in two installments, one $26,750, the other half $26,750. Those payments were made during 2020. In this calendar year, 2021, the true-up amount that we paid was $48,707.77.
Is Tiffin City, Tiffin City, Tiffin City, are we getting our bang for these dollars? A good negotiation, a good deal for the city?
I mean, I think so. You know, I was involved, but I know others on the administrative team were involved in the discussions. The amount that we agreed that we are paying, I believe, was significantly less than a suggested amount when the county was trying to determine what were the appropriate sharing expenses. So I think that the city team is comfortable with the dollar amount, the category, the items involved. But I'll let others, if you'd like, to speak to that, because this took a lot of time over the year to try to gather information from the county to make this ultimately a recommendation for council's approval.
Still have the floor?
No.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, if I can briefly interrupt, just a procedural question. Will this be under motions to amend this, or would this be when we move for passage?
Under motions, correct, that you would move to amend Ordinance 96 with the changes of the dollar figures.
Would you prefer that we do the specific dollar figures, or would a motion to approve the operating costs as presented by the Director of Law in a previous email?
You could make reference to that, but I think the motion should be specific to the dollar amounts, which would be what I gave you. Those were amounts that were researched and determined by the Finance Director, and so I believe that you should include that increased amount in the new total for that line item.
Very good. May I trouble you for those one more time?
Sure. It's $58,981.77, with a new total of $167,409.04.
Thank you, Director of Law.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you. President Vogt? If we don't suspend the three-reading rule tonight, and if we don't pass this 2196 tonight, what is the worst-case scenario for the City of Tiffin?
Worst case is that it will be delayed a couple of weeks, assuming that you do eventually approve it. We're trying to cooperate with the county. We have a great relationship. They're wanting to finalize this. I understand the commissioners have approved this. They want to finalize this agreement, amendment, so that they can receive the money this year. We're already, you know, way behind what we would typically do, pay by April 1st and October 1st. So in fairness, they have paid all these expenses up to this date, and so those are tax dollars, too. And we have, I think, an obligation to pay this to contribute our share. That was part of the spirit of the Joint Justice Center.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I've got a question. I'm just going, I thought it was...
Clock's not working this.
I bring this up in the committee of the whole. I want to bring it up again, word for word, during, I want to be transparent with the public sitting here, transparent with the public listening in on the radio or TV, whatever they're doing. And I know it won't be in the newspaper, but I just want to be upfront and honest with people, and that's enough for now.
Explain all the numbers. Anyone else? Anything else for the committee of the whole?
Which clock is correct around here?
Oh, it isn't that one. It's one right above your head, that I can see, you can't.
We don't have time for my next one. I'll keep it for later on.
Okay. Well, during the committee of the whole meeting? And we will call the order of the City Council for November 1st, 2021. Good evening and welcome to everybody this evening. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let us pray. Lord, we come before you as a humble and grateful people. We ask you to guide our hands in our decision-making for the people, property, and finances of this great city. We ask you to look over the first responders as they work to protect our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Regents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Now I'll ask Councilman Ann Forrest to please call the role of council.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Councilmember Gillig.
Here.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Here.
But the record show that six of the seven members were present. Do we have any petitions?
There are no petitions, Mr. President.
Everyone hopefully got a chance to look over the minutes from our regular meeting on October 18th in the committee of the whole meeting. Also, we had a correction letter that was sent out. Everybody's hopefully had a chance to look that over. Are there any questions, additions, dilutions? All right, well, seeing none, without objection, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We're now under committee report. Finance Committee, Councilman Gillig.
No report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, does anybody from Law and Community Planning have a report?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel Labor Relations Committee, Councilman Perry.
Our part, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation of Public Property, Councilman Perkins.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic Development Downtown Planning, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Very good, thank you. We're now under reports to the officers. His Honor, Mayor Aaron Demonts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've assured Councilwoman Yanatuno that I will keep this very brief this evening. I thank her for coming in. I know she injured herself late last week and is hearing a lot of pain this evening because we need her, obviously, to vote with an additional absence on council. Essentially, a quick rundown of financial numbers, the month of October has been pretty rough for us financially. We kind of foretold that ahead of time as we were going up against record collections last year. To run down very quickly, we are down for the month of October, $136,000 month-to-date, which is a 14.5% decrease for the month of October 2021 versus October 2020. With that said, we are still sitting in a very solid position for the year-to-date, that being $590,000 ahead of last year, which is 6.8%. The last few weeks have been consumed with budget meetings and making final adjustments. Earlier today, I gave the directive to the Finance Director to send council the budget. You all have that in your email boxes. If anyone would like a hard copy, please let us know. We can arrange for that with council. With that said, we know there are already a couple of changes that came in today last minute, so you will already be getting a few minor changes between now and the budget hearing scheduled for the 9th, but they're all very relatively minor changes that we have to propose to you all. But I want to thank Kathy and the department heads for all of the hard work that went into preparation of this year's budget. It is essentially right at where we try to keep with that 5% within the revenue and the expenses for the year. The reason we're at about 5.5% to 5.6% this year is because we're continuing to spend some of the previous CARES Act dollars that we still have in the general fund that we received last year. And also, you'll notice when we go through the budget this year, we're beginning to spend some of the ARPA funds that have come in, which was the newest stimulus. So that is why, when you run the numbers, as I know some of you will, you'll see a slight variation on that usual 5% differential. I attended the Main Street Conference in Springfield, Ohio, two weeks ago, so I actually left right after our council meeting was over that night and drove to Springfield. It was a very positive conference. One of the things that myself and our downtown manager, Amy Reinhardt, really took away from the conference was we went on a two-hour-plus tour from one of their historians of all of their public art in the community, which is perfect timing. If you all recall, you just passed the Public Art Commission. They've had a commission like that for a number of years in their city that has encouraged a lot of public art and different displays. So it was great. We got to really pick their brain and then talk to the gentleman afterwards to try to find out some of the things that have worked well, things that have not worked well, et cetera. But the whole conference was very positive. Then I want to congratulate the Renaissance of Tiffin and the Pink Lady because they won the Main Street Business of the Year for the entire state of Ohio at that conference. So congratulations to them. A second award was won, and I think I've seen David Zacks here in the audience, the Tiffin and Seneca Cares Program. If you recall, last year, we put significant dollars into a grant program. The city put over $600,000 in, and the total between the city and county was over $1.2 million. That program helped over, or nearly 200 businesses right here in Tiffin and Seneca County, more than $1.2 million of relief into their budgets, and those businesses employ nearly 800 people that we are able to help. So with that, the Ohio Economic Developers Association presented the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, and TSEP with the Excellence in Innovation Award for the state of Ohio for that program. So kudos to all of you, kudos to David. They really threw that program together quite quickly. I know when we were at a ribbon-cutting, and I told David, you're going to get this done, and David's eyes got big, but he said, we'll find a way. And lo and behold, TSEP really rallied together around the program, made it happen, and nearly 200 businesses, 800 employees, and $1.2 million later, we're now receiving accolades for the entire state of Ohio for that program, helping our local businesses. So thank you, David, and your team for their help as well, and thank you, City Council, for backing the creation of that program when we did that last year. Just to keep council updated, as I've mentioned a few meetings ago, we are in the process of the start of completely overhauling and rebuilding the City of Tiffin website. It's been a number of years since anything other than minor updates have been done to it. We are working in cooperation with TSEP, the Seneca County Commissioners, as well as a few other entities. With that, we've received 12 firms that have submitted proposals to us, and myself, David, and the others on the committee are going to begin to sift through them. We've all already scored those different firms without chatting with one another to see kind of where they rank, and we're going to interview, is it the top four, David, or three? Top four firms will be interviewed so that we can move forward, and that will be one of the first major tasks for our new Director of Communications and Constituent Services for the city. Street paving has been completed everywhere within the City of Tiffin except for the OPWC program in the second ward. Matt told me this morning that is approximately 50% complete. They've got about half the streets to go, but they will get it done yet this year. So that program will be completed. And also, to let everyone know, and the public and council, that this is another year that we have, not we, NOPEC has to send out opt-out letters for gas aggregation. So you may have received some communications already, but if you get calls from your constituents, it is required once every three years. So they're going out this year for residents to choose if they wish to remain in NOPEC or opt out. Just a couple of quick last-minute items. I want to congratulate Rosen Co., Mercantile, on their ribbon-cutting downtown, and also yours with every stitch. Those were two new businesses that held ribbon cuttings within the last week. I want to thank the volunteers that took part and helped put on downtown trick-or-treat, another huge success, even though it was raining. And then also, thank you to the Chamber and Loan Depot for organizing this year's Halloween parade, our first parade in 22 months in the city. The last parade before that was the Christmas parade, and I'm glad to see us having a Halloween parade. I'm glad to see also that the Christmas parade has been scheduled for downtown Tiffin, so it appears that things in that regard are returning to normal. The grand marshal this year, Candy Messmer, who has organized the parade for the last 23 years at TDC, is really pushing hard for us to be able to allow it back at TDC next year, so we're hoping this is just a one-year-type event, but we can't guarantee it. But if the state does not allow us to have it at TDC again, we'll find a way to bring her back downtown. And then last but not least, with tomorrow being Election Day, I wish all of you the best that are on the ballot this year, and I also urge the public to vote yes for the charter amendments. The Charter Review Commission worked extremely hard on these items, as I have stated, as Mr. Howard has stated, and many others, that these are mainly housekeeping items. They're points of clarification. So please strongly consider voting yes for our charter amendments. Events coming up, remember to change your clocks this coming weekend already, on November 6th, before you get up on the 7th. The budget hearing is next week with the administration and council on November the 9th at 5:30. And then late next week, on Veterans Day, which is the 11th, the new Burks and Home Centric store will be opening out at the Westgate Shopping Center in the former Staples Pat Katans location at 9:00 a.m. And then also a reminder, City Hall is closed on the 11th as we remember Veterans Day. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thanks, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? I'm going to ask all the council members to, when they start reviewing the budget, if you have questions, because that meeting can get very, very lengthy, if you have questions, please either let the mayor know, or Dale know, or Kathy, so if we could kind of speed up the process and get answers to those things.
Yeah, I think really what we're asking, if you have questions, we'd love to have them ahead of time so that we're not leafing through 120 pages trying to find the answer to be able to answer you. So if it's something, obviously, you think of last minute, it's not the end of the world if you ask it. But we'd prefer, if you're leafing through the budget in the next several days and you come up with a list of questions, if we could have those ahead of time so that we can help get you answers. In fact, we don't care if you ask them again that night. It's just nice that we're prepared so that we can give you answers to the questions you have, because as you all know, that budget, especially now that it prints landscape style because of the wider document, it is extremely lengthy, and for us to be flipping through right then and there trying to find answers to questions, it just really extends the meeting. So that's what we'd appreciate if you're willing to do it.
You said it better than I did. I'm not trying to reduce debate, just speed up the process a little bit.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Kirk, your counsel, Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now under written communications.
There are no written communications.
All right. We're now under oral communications. Anybody from the attending public who wishes to address council, please step to the podium, sign in, announce who you are, and Director, comments to the President of Council, please.
Hello, good evening. My name's Eduardo Hernando with the Tiffin Riverfront Development Project. On November 1st, the council requested that I return, well, at least deliver a letter. I didn't have to return, but I felt it such a memorial moment to bring the letter to you personally. So if I could, I could just, I'm not sure how I can hand these out, if you don't mind. It won't take much time, it's just a commitment letter with credit approval that you requested concerning the project.
It appears, yeah, it appears so.
This is, there's one copy, is that correct?
Yes, one stable copy for each person. At this point, we, I believe there's a letter, I'm not sure, David Zack, that letter was a recommendation for the approval of the PACE and the TIF authorization, a resolution. So at this point, we really need you, your help in taking the next step, and the next milestone is for us to get to a closing at the end of February. We can't close, we can't do anything without that resolution. That's really where we're at in this project. Now, in both cases, the, I know the multifamily has been, is not related to the city directly, but it is impacted with the PACE and the TIF. So the funding for the multifamily project is something we're requesting so that both projects can be done simultaneously. That will help significantly with our cost of construction, especially with the situation now economically. The fact that you actually authorized the extension helps the project significantly because costs are, even though there's, you know, supply chain issues, costs for construction are starting to come down, so we expect that our budgets are going to come into some line. Even though there are going to be a potential 20%, 30% increase in cost, we're still in a good position because the overall project made sense from the beginning. So I'll just leave you with those thoughts, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for coming this evening. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hernando? I guess one question I have for the law director, does this meet the obligation of our request?
I just received it. So, you know, I'd have to review it in some detail, study it to make sure that it would meet the requirement. You know, it is from a financial firm, I assume, Stone Hill. It says commitment letter with credit approval, but I think I'd have to really read the contents and study it, and if I have any follow-up questions, I can contact the developer and, if necessary, the lender to verify information. So, you know, I apologize, but I don't think that I can give you good advice or response to that question right now. I'd have to make sure that I study the almost four-page letter, or five-page letter.
Okay. Just to point out one thing specific on the track record of Stone Hill, in the middle, right under the paragraph there, just Stone Hill pays as a subsidiary of Stone Hill, a debt-funding specializing in hospitality that is set to deploy over $1 billion in 2021. So there's, you know, they're a great partner to have and very excited about the project as well, and I'm happy to and excited to be here tonight to bring this to you. Brent, of course, any questions you have, we follow up, you can follow up with Stone Hill directly if you need to.
So really, at this point in time, we can't take any additional action until we hear back from your review.
Yeah, my suggestion is, you know, there's no legislative action immediately that council needs to take. What we should do is, I can evaluate it along with the city administration. There are, I noticed a couple of things in here that would require legislative action. There's a tax increment financing aspect of this. There is a PACE financing which deals with certain clean energy financing that cities, political subdivisions may participate in. So we'll have to evaluate that and come back to council's next meeting with prior recommendation of how we could participate, what information we might need from the developer to have you understand and make sure that, as you know, with those type of financing, you don't just summarily give those, you have to understand all the terms of those financing participation that the city has, make sure that it's justified, that there's a public interest in all, there's a public benefit. So all that, we're going to have to gather to be able to submit to council, and so I can't speak to the specifics of it, but those will, two areas that you will definitely be asked, you know, if they're justified, you'll be asked to participate in with legislative action. justified, you'll be asked to participate in with legislative action. Again, just like you've done the other case, a couple of cases on the west side, those tax increment financing. This is a little different type of tax increment financing because it's going to finance, participate in private improvements on private property that was formerly public property. So this is an allowed way of allowing tax revenue to be used for private improvements, and you have to meet certain requirements. That's different than what we did before, where, as you may know, we made public improvements to infrastructure and had payments in lieu of taxes to pay the city back for that. This is a little different, is allowed under Ohio Revised Code, but we'll have to study this and get back to council, and we'll give a report next regular meeting.
All right. So that's part of the contingency, of course, of council passing the resolution for the TIF and the PACE. And of course, we can always bring Andrew Burchard, who's worked with the city, as a, to the meeting if needed to help answer a lot of the questions the council may have at that time. So we can stay in touch of whatever you need for the next meeting, and we can be back. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, wait a minute. Do you have a question for?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Hernando.
We have a question.
Just one question. These five pages are confidential. Do you want these back from us, or you?
No, no, they're public.
It's a public record.
Yeah. I consulted with Brent earlier about that.
Okay, well, I-
Documents being, you know, public. Of course, the project's public, and the documents have to be public as well.
I'm just reading as I see it, so.
Okay, okay.
Just because the financing company put confidential information on it, once it was given to us, this is a public record, anybody from the public. I mean, this involves public property. It's a public transaction, so the public has a right to know.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes, again, thank you. All right. Anyone else from the public wishes to address council? Please step forward.
Jeff Weber. You all know I own the property at 160 through 164 South Washington. You've already answered one question, which was, now that he's given that to you, is that public record? And I guess I need to know the process. I'd like to get a copy of that letter, and I'll be happy to submit whatever I need to, to get it. The second question that I have is really a point of clarification. In the last meeting, the board meetings reflect that on November the 1st, he is to have a written loan agreement. It doesn't say a commitment letter. It says a written loan agreement. And I'm not sure what that document says and if it qualifies as that. But I would ask you to please stick with what was supposed to have been submitted this evening and not have continued caveats, and you have to pass something before I can do this and all that. None of that should have been part of any of this. So I would like to have somebody tell me how I need to submit to get a copy of that, and I'd ask for your consideration in actually defining what a written loan agreement is and what that piece of paper is that he's circulated.
All right. I'll let the law director answer both of those.
Yeah, Mr. Weber, the first is, we can make a copy of this this evening and give it to you.
Thank you.
And you don't need to put in writing. Your request is known to us at public meetings. We can, we'll make a copy of it and give it to you. The agreement with the developer was not a written loan agreement. It was a written loan commitment with credit approval. And I apologize if some of the terminology in the minutes was not exactly that. But it's written loan commitment with credit approval. That's what was supposed to be presented on or before this date. And so that's, it says it in title. I don't know if the substance is a written loan commitment with a credit approval, but it might very well be. That's where I need to study that. So it's not a loan agreement. That was not the addendum that the city signed. And so that was, if it was reported that way, maybe I made that statement, and I apologize. That's not correct, though. It's a written loan commitment with credit approval.
Minutes reflect otherwise, you might want to change.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I may just address the question or concern for council, just to clarify. The assumption is that I'm going to take a loan. I don't have to take a loan on what the difference is between the entire project amount, the construction budget, and the difference that we need for PACE and the TIF, which is what we're asking for the resolution. I mean, if I have $11 million, I don't need a loan. So there's no requirement for me to provide a loan agreement or a loan document or any loan language at all. As a developer, the only question we're talking about is the resolution that we need for approval from the city in that specific arena. So the choice of bringing all the money in, or me having part of it being a loan, or part of it being equity, these dynamics are directly related to me confidentially on how I get to closing. And now I have to fulfill the next milestone, which is closing. And that's really where we are at this point. So just to clarify, there's no loan requirement that I have to abide by to make this project get to a closing. So, thank you.
I see we have some Boy Scouts in the audience this evening. What troop are you with? Who's speaking for the, who's speaking for the Boy Scouts? 499, okay. And why are you here this evening?
For one of our merit badges, we have to attend a public meeting.
Public meeting, okay.
Where there's discussion that we can write about.
Well, good. Do we get a transcript of your notes? Well, thank you for being here. Councilman Gillig.
Yeah, if I can introduce some of them. In the back there, that is Michael Ross. Michael's a senior at Tiffin-Columbian, standout offensive lineman for them.
Go Blue.
Can't quite figure out his hairstyle just yet, but he's doing it. Then there's his little brother Zach. I have Zach in eighth grade. Also lucky enough to have Jace Arias. His dad, Jose, owns, you're going to have to help me, Jace.
Happy Days.
Happy Days. Happy Days Nutrition. Next to him, Austin King. And then in the front, we have Zane Holm. And I don't know the gentleman next to Zane, but I'm sure he's a heck of a kid.
That's my brother.
That's your brother? Oh, my gosh. Yeah, really, really neat group of kids out there. It's great to have you guys here.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I get accused in that listing. 499 is represented by which entity, church?
Clinton Towne.
Okay, Clinton Towne. Thank you, sir. And I was in Boy Scouts, I think, 30 years ago. And what's the name of the, 32 years, all right, 32. What was the name of the merit badge specific? Is it?
Munication.
Sir, I'm sorry. Okay. And has it changed any in the last 32 years? Or maybe you don't know that.
No.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. All right. Well, thanks for being here. Anybody else? Anybody else wishes to address council this evening? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to motions. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would so move that we amend ordinance 21-96 to amend the joint use agreement to budget the necessary funds to pay the 2021 city portion of the Joint Justice Center. This will appropriate an additional $58,981.77 for a new total of $167,409.4.
We have a motion to amend ordinance 21-96. Is there a second, Councilman Perkins?
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Let the record show that the motion passed unanimously with all members present.
I think Ken voted against it.
I voted against it.
I have to one.
I have to one.
I thought you said aye.
No, no. When you said opposed, didn't you say opposed? I'm not in favor.
I'm in favor, and you said aye.
You said oppose, same sign, and he said aye.
Okay, forgive me.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let the record show that the motion passes, right?
Yeah.
We only need five. Okay. Thank you. Five to one. Any other motions? All right, we're now under resolutions and ordinances.
There are no resolutions this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you.
An ordinance, so we have ordinance number 21-90, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance creating the position of Director of Communications and Constituent Services and establishing the rates of pay for the position.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-90. Councilman Perkins.
Yeah, I would like to ask council to pass ordinance 21-90 tonight. This is a much-needed position for the city, and especially with us redoing the website and with social media and things of that nature.
Thank you. We have a motion to pass ordinance 21-90. Is there a second, Councilwoman Yanatuno?
A second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage of ordinance 21-90.
Councilman Per, I'm sorry. Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-90 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-91, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance rescinds the removal of the traffic signal at the intersection of Circular and Melmore Streets within the city and approves retaining the traffic signal at the intersection.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-91. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-91.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 21-91. Is there a second, Councilman Gillig?
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage of ordinance 21-91.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-91 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-93, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a temporary easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire property rights by temporary easement from Roger A. Drake, located at 145 Ella Street to construct the new Ella Street River Bridge.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-93. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-93.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 21-93. Is there a second, Councilman Perry?
I have a second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage of ordinance 21-93.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-93 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-94, introduced by Don Yanatuno. Ordinance amending ordinance number 0978, revising and restating the grant program using local funds to assist property owners in removing clean water connections from the sanitation system and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-94. Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask ordinance 21-94 be immediate passage.
Thank you. We have a motion for immediate passage of ordinance 21-94. Is there a second, Councilman Leopard?
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-94.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-94 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Amended ordinance number 21-96, ordinance introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance approving a first amendment to the joint use, management, and lease agreement with Seneca County by revising the calculation of the city's share of operating costs of the Joint Justice Center, authorizing the mayor to sign the first amendment on behalf of the city, amending the budget to pay the city's share of 2020 operating costs, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of amended ordinance 21-96. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 21-96.
Amended ordinance?
Yes, immediate passage of amended ordinance 21-96.
Okay. We have a motion to suspend council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of amended ordinance 21-96. Is there a second, Councilman Perkins?
I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is only the second reading. I'm going to need more time to look this over because two weeks ago, it started out 103,000. Tonight, it went 102,207.77. I didn't get a chance to look at the email that got sent late this afternoon or early this afternoon. I did some math on it, and I just can't sit here without more explanation, and I'm not going to vote on something I don't totally understand. So.
Director of Law, do you have any, anything you want to add or to earlier comments?
No. You know, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have, Councilman Jones, if there's, you know, something that we can, you know, help explain.
Well, if somebody's got a calculator, two weeks ago, they start out 103,000, 3% increase for, no one said ever, no such thing as ever, I guess. I did my calculations, and I came up with 20 years from now, instead of 103,000 per year, it's going to be roughly 186,000. I don't have the change in the pennies. So if someone's got a calculator and can take 103,000 at 3% and do it 20 times, and if it does come out to 186,000 in year 2041 without knowing more about the Justice Center, Joint Justice Center, and our commitment to them, I'm not comfortable agreeing to suspending the three-reading rule or passage of ordinance 21-96.
Well, I want to add a couple of things. You weren't a member of council when we formed the, developed the language that developed the Joint Justice Center.
That is correct.
Okay. And I believe this was the first time this has happened in Ohio. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. And-
For this kind of building.
For this kind of building. We were able to consolidate a lot of resources with the cooperation of the county between Fostoria-Tiffin and the county. So that cooperation immediately led to a reduction in costs for the courts. We've been a beneficiary of that agreement. Part of our responsibility is that we have, we share in those costs. So I understand that you might have some-
Reservations.
Reservations about what the numbers are, but I can assure you that we have benefited from this agreement. The community has benefited from the savings at a number of levels, and we're much better off for having done this. And I think that we need to move ahead and get this done because two weeks from now, we're still going to, if we waited, it's still going to get, it's still going to get passed, in my opinion. So, you know, if you decide you don't want to vote on it in favor tonight, that's your, that's your decision. But I'm just telling you that I'm not going to throw out what's already been a very positive relationship between the county and City of Tiffin and Fostoria. So, that's my two cents worth. Okay, we have a motion. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for that explanation, Director of Law, Howard, and President Foote. But we just got an email this afternoon, and I didn't get a chance to review it or look at it. And I know you explained probably what's in the email. Waiting two weeks is not the end of the world. So I'm suggesting we wait two more weeks, let myself do some research on my own, and maybe I'll change my opinion in two weeks. Other than that, I'll stand down.
Law Director.
Yeah, and, you know, I respect your caution with this. I do want to, I think, just give you kind of another, the explanation that I gave during the committee- The explanation that I gave during the committee, the whole, so the public hears. And I know that's important to you, is that when this joint use agreement was negotiated, we had an obligation to pay 25% of the operating cost. And just as we paid 25% of the capital cost to construct the Justice Center. In fact, as it went over some of the preliminary amounts, we did not go up in value, or our contribution. But the agreement was going forward, we would pay 25% because we have about 1/4 of the Justice Center in terms of our floor of the municipal court, with the clerk's office there, the probation department, the security of the building that is provided for the municipal court. So the costs were... It was agreed to determine the cost by a budget that the county, since they had typically the best information each year to try to track the expenses to maintain the Justice Center, they would come up with a budget through the county commissioner's office and provide the budget to us, so we would know what our share was. Then we would pay twice a year, divide that budgeted amount. We would pay that to the county. And then the succeeding year, we would then receive a complete itemization of the operating cost as best that they could determine, the county. And if we owed more, which we typically have, and that happened in 2020, then we would pay that amount, the extra amount. What we have found out in the several years that we have worked together with the operation of the Justice Center, that it's not as objective, cut and dry, as we would have liked. In both, I would say that even the county will admit that it's hard to track those expenses. And what is truly an operational expense that we should share in? And we have some disagreement with that. We've had a healthy discussion with the county, very collaborative, very amicable, I believe, very open and transparent with each party. And it was determined in that discussion this year that we would all be better off if we determined what the 2020 amount is and then just increased that, so we had a set amount going forward. And I believe, and I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I believe that the suggested amount by the county was significantly higher than what they are... What we agreed in the amendment that you were reviewing and will approve, hopefully. That 102,000, some figure, and I know we need exact figures for you because I think at the last meeting, it was an estimate of 103,000. And that's why, you know, you were calculating on an estimated amount, a roundup amount. But I think what we've determined is there's a better way for us to contribute our share of operational costs to the Justice Center. And that's what we've negotiated with the county. We have to come back to counsel to approve that with your understanding of how that works. So, given that explanation, I know I didn't give you a lot of exact figures, but I guess, what questions do you have? Do you have any concerns about how the process we went through from the beginning, the first Justice Center operation agreement, to reviewing the operation expenses, to coming up with an alternative way that we think is... Will be better for both parties? Do you have any concerns about the process we went through and our kind of the conceptual reasons for doing this?
No, I do not.
Okay. So you agree that that makes sense? That what I've explained about how the process was determined and how we should move forward?
I agree.
Correct?
I agree. But if I understood you correctly, Director of Law, Howard, we're committed to 25% of the operational cost. 20 years from now, is our 25% at 186... And I don't know 20 years from now what the total operating costs are. And if I'm not putting words in President Foote's mouth, I do not like to say when this passes. I'm saying if this passes. And if this passes tonight, I have no... I can go down to someone in the county and say, "What is the projected operating cost 20 years from now?" And they're giving me a figure, and I'm gonna divide that by four or five, whatever it is. And if it's more than 186,000, I just don't think I'm doing my homework and agreeing to this. If you can tell me what the operating costs are 20 years from now, I know that's tough.
I don't think anyone can tell you exactly what that is, but...
That's not the question.
Yeah, but I think...
That's my question.
Right. But I guess I would answer is saying that counties can't tell you what that is, but we have determined a process for determining what our share will be. And we think that that's kind of a fair way, knowing how costs do escalate over the years.
Okay.
All right. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Jones, I've always very much admired your dedication to the city and the constituents and to make certain that things are going the way they should. And I think that's extraordinarily admirable. I might argue that that wouldn't really be something you would need to tackle. We do have a duty to trust the process. We have Mayor Montz and City Minister Thornton, our law director, and Kathy Kaufman. They've spent quite a few hours on this. You might recall the mayor brought up that it would sometimes come down to hours of haggling over, "Well, was this a city chair or a county chair?" This will make it a little bit more efficient for us, I feel. And it'll make it easier to budget. It'll also free up our city administration to do other very pressing things. We know they already have quite a full plate already. And personally, I would just... I would love to see... And I know, I understand it's frustrating. We got the email this afternoon. This has all been relatively recent, but these are... This is our city administration, and they tend to do a pretty darn good job for us. And I'm inclined to trust them. And if they believe this will help us and if we can square up what we owe now and not wait an additional two weeks, I think it's an opportunity we should strongly consider.
Thank you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Gillig. You mentioned the process, follow the process. Correct me if I'm wrong, but processes have three readings on ordinance 21-96, not have two readings, not skip two weeks. So if we want to follow the process, let's follow the process and wait two weeks and put it to a vote.
That's understandable, but we also do have the process in place, the mechanism to suspend counsel's three-reading rule, if indeed that will be beneficial to the city. So that is also part of the process.
Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the vote on suspension, please, for amended ordinance 21-96.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Emergency... Excuse me. The suspension passes with a vote of five to one. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Jones?
No, it fails. Amendment. It's not. Because they have six. You only had four vote in favor because you didn't have Bridget here. I'm sorry.
We have five to one. We have six. We have six votes.
But you need six. You need six yeses.
That's right. Okay.
You need six to suspend, and you don't have that because Bridget's not here. So you only have five.
That's what I asked earlier, right? That's... Okay. My fault. So the suspension fails with a vote of five to one.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Mr. President?
Yes.
Would we then read the ordinance for the second time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the ordinance has been read for a second time already.
I'm sorry, yes.
It'll just be read for the third time at the next meeting and vote on the passage.
Parent-teacher conferences today.
Oh, we got the Boy Scouts watching. Oh, boy. All right.
Ordinance number 21-100, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance enacting section 149.035 of Tiffin Codified Ordinances regarding the appointment of a deputy fire chief.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-100.
Ordinance number 21-101, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, and recommend and execute a contract for the 2022 street paving program and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-101.
Ordinance number 21-103, introduced by Don Yannatuno. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign an extension of a lease of approximately 12.318 acres of land in Eagle Rock Business Park to Development Solutions LLC and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-103. Councilwoman Yannatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask counsel to suspend the three-reading rule and ask for immediate passage of 21-103.
Thank you. We have a... We have a motion to suspend counsel's three-reading rule and the immediate passage of ordinance 21-103. Council... Is there a second? Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Yannatuno.
Yes, the lease runs out today, and so this gives them a 60-day extension.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, you had your hand up? Okay. Anyone else?
I did, but I...
All right. I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension for ordinance 21-103.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Leopard?
Yes.
Councilman Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the suspension... Or, excuse me, on the passage of ordinance 21-103.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry? Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-103 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-104, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept permanent easements from Store Master Funding 14 LLC for sanitary sewer purposes along Mall Road, County Road 11 in Eagle Rock Business Park, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-104.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. We are now under other business. Does anyone have anything for counsel? Councilman Jones.
Old business. Under 21-104, where can I go to look up what Store Master Funding 14 LLC... Who is that or... Or what is that that we had the first reading? I can...
Director of Law.
Yeah, that is the property where the formerly known as Toledo Molding Dye, now... Garmer? Grammar. Grammar, I'm sorry. Grammar. That's that property. So this is part of the sanitary sewer improvements that are necessary for the spec building. They run parallel to Mall Road. And we need a... As the engineer for the spec building project, they've determined that we need a strip on that Garmer property. And so that's where it's located.
Anyone else? Anything for the good of the order? All right. Councilman Leopard.
I'd just like to address our Boy Scouts for a minute. Proud to say I have a nephew that's... He was an Eagle Scout. Now he is a professional Boy Scout. He's 39 years old, I guess. He runs several camps in Ohio. And prior to that, he was in the state of Kansas. Kind of ran the whole state there. I have a great nephew that received his Eagle Scout award last year. And both my nephew and my great nephew are now out in New Mexico at... Okay, help me out. What's the big camp out there? There you go. They're out at Philmont. My great nephew is working the trails there for an entire year. And my nephew did as well after graduating from high school, so... I know it's a big chore getting your Eagle Scout award, but that should be the goal that you should work towards. It's... Both my nephew and great nephew are very, very proud of that accomplishment. And I'm proud for them, so keep working hard.
That's great. How many members of the council and administration were in the Boy Scouts?
Hey, that's sexist.
How many were in the Girl Scouts?
The Girl Scouts.
Well, I was getting to it.
Oh, Girl Scouts are all Boy Scouts.
Perkins, was there the hand the only one that didn't know?
Councilman Jones.
I would like to address the members of Troop 499. I was in Boy Scout Troop 494 with the Elks. And I know a Eagle Scout who was in scouting about 32 years ago. And he got his Eagle Scout, and now he is a councilperson in Tiffin, Ohio. So I'm sure some of us, or one of us, is proud of that.
Him high, be like, "Councilman Jones."
President Foote, I believe Marcia was our pack leader, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, really?
Yeah.